Priorities. So the first is our COVID-19 response values framework resolution. That was passed in May of last year. And really what's important to think about in this, we've got some things that are highlighted here. Is that there was an intent to really think about fiscal resiliency, equity, and really climate action and how all of that impacts our most oppressed communities, our most systemically oppressed communities. And out of that particular resolution, there was a toolkit, right? There was some actions that were specific to what we're doing with climate. And I think it's really important to that last bullet to think about, you know, what does accountability look like? And for the first time with this particular resolution, there was something specific that called out, you know, what are we doing to really make sure that we are holding bureaus accountable? For what needs to happen as we think about our most vulnerable populations in the city? Okay, next slide. So as I mentioned, with that COVID-19 response resolution, there was a toolkit that was adopted. And this toolkit really provides key guidelines, key data, key information, to really ensure that bureaus and offices think about the decisions that they are making as it relates to COVID-19.
Welcome, sorry for the late start. This meeting was uncertain.
We really saw the toolkit and it was developed in collaboration with equity managers from different bureaus and other equity practitioners across the city. But really the intent was to provide some foundation around what populations are we talking about? Who have most desperately been impacted by COVID? And in that, how are we really thinking and being very purposeful about our fiscal decisions? About anything that has to do with release and recovery efforts? And so this toolkit provided guidelines and data to really help guide that conversation. And so the toolkit will be, I think, very useful in the months to come as we're thinking about some near term work that we have to do. Okay, next slide. And then in June, June 17th, actually, we adopted our core city values resolution. This came also as we had adopted Juneteenth as a holiday, a paid holiday for employees across the city. And the city of course values resolution, I think, is really key to keep in mind. Because if you see at the middle of this slide, anti-racism, equity, transparency, communication, collaboration, fiscal responsibility, are really the heart of what we're talking about. And each of these can be broken down. We don't have time to really get into that today. But I think, you know, when we say that these are our values, how is that showing up? In the decisions that we're making and the conversations that we're having? And the ways that we're interacting with community? How are we really living this, right? How are we walking the walk and talking the talk? And our core values resolution brings us back to that. And so this is something that we've really been pushing in different spaces to make sure that it is top of mind in our conversations. Okay, next slide, Jessica. And we have here the people's plan, not necessarily a new plan. This actually was rolled out in the spring of 2016. But I think it's important to mention here because what we do have that is new. That was some new work that happened over the summer was reimagine Oregon. And the people's plan really was sort of the impetus for reimagine Oregon work. People's plan laid out what, you know, fiscal resiliency looks like, what education looks like, what community engaged policing looked like. So all of the components of the people's plan really are sort of, you know, feeding into what we now have with reimagine Oregon. And the thing to think about with reimagine Oregon is the way that that particular document is laid out is that there are jurisdictions that have specific roles and responsibilities. And so City of Portland is a part of that work. There is some work that we've moved on, other things that we are, you know, in discussion about and really sort of thinking about. But I think it's important to put these two pieces here. And the other thing to mention about these two plans is that they really are getting at the core of our black community in Portland. And that was the foundation, right, in the thinking here. And I know in the people's plan, a lot of the questions were around, you know, what, where can you be black in Portland, right? What, what would this look like? You know, if we had the resources and the supports that we needed, right? To be resilient and to really, you know, thrive here as a community. And so I think these two plans are very vital as you're thinking about, you know, where your priorities lie and how we can move on that. Okay. Think next slide, Jessica.
Yeah, so as you've just heard briefly, there are many values, plans and documents that offer support and guidance to all of us, all bureau staff and implementers, as well as to you all, to transform and improve Portland. The work in front of us now is to connect and reframe and really focus these values and these plans, given the multiple crises we currently face. Specifically, the financial impact of the pandemic implores us to be relentlessly focused on what is most necessary and urgent in order to ensure progress is made. So we wanted to provide you with some brief context. We are happy to go into more detail if you'd like, but as I mentioned earlier, the bulk of today is really about creating space for you all to talk about your individual priorities and to have a facilitated discussion around those priorities. So try to, try to find those areas of alignment and consensus and help us support you as bureau leaders and bureau staff in achieving, in achieving those priorities. So we'll now commence with the discussion portion of the work session. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Smith, who's setting aside her bureau director hat in order to don her facilitator hat for your discussion.
Thank you, Jessica. I told you we're going to hear a lot from me today. So this slide, if you were able to check your inbox, all that lovely email, you probably would have seen this. And these were a couple of questions that were really kind of grounding questions we wanted you to think about in terms of, you know, what are your priorities? And then how would you define success, right? What are indicators of success within that? And so just sort of thinking about that, we're going to walk through kind of a facilitated discussion. I don't want to feel like, you know, there are so many bumpers or boundaries on it that folks can't also freely sort of talk about what's coming up for them. But I want to make sure that we have enough time to engage everyone and that, you know, you have, you know, your, your time for questions or comments as, as are necessary as we go through, through this conversation. So those are the questions that we posed to you. So you can kind of be thinking about that. Okay, next slide. And I'm a very visual person. And so I slipped this one in here, Jessica. So Jessica, you know, had a slide, a couple of slides ago, that really sort of listed, right? In print, the crises that we are going through. And for me, again, like having a visual of what that means and what that looks like, I think is, again, speaking, keeping it personal, local and immediate, is, it just really makes it very profound. Like I can't forget that, right? When I see that image. And so what I want us to do here is just pause for like a minute. You see some images here on the screen. They are reflective again of the words that Jessica shared in a couple of slides before. So I want you to take a minute, see what's here. And then I want you to articulate, and we'll give you time, you can come off mute, like one word that's coming up for you as you look at these images, what you see before you. So we'll just give you a minute to do that. Okay, a couple more seconds. Okay, um, I'm gonna start with you, Mayor. What's your one word that's coming up as you think about these images here? Do you see these images?
The one word is related.
Okay.
These are all related.
Okay, so related. Thank you. Um, let's see, Commissioner Maps, what's coming up for you? You're on mute.
Now it's an official meeting. The word, the word that comes up for me is also literally printed on this slide, and that's crisis. Here we have, what, three, four, five, five or six urgent crises? That means just really acute problems that require urgent and immediate action.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maps. Commissioner Rubio?
I had two words that came to mind. One is urgency and one is overdue.
Thank you. I was a teacher, so I can give you two. It's all good. Okay, um, see Commissioner Hardisty?
Yes, ma'am.
So what's coming up for you? What's your one word as you see these, these images?
Normal.
Okay, thank you. Shouldn't be, but here we are, right?
But our reality, right?
Yep, absolutely. And Commissioner Ryan, what's coming up for you?
Okay, the trick about going last is you don't want to repeat someone's word.
That's okay, that's okay.
For me, it was urgency and, yeah, I'll just say it again, urgency.
Okay, all good. No right or wrong, right? Again, sort of putting some visual, right, to what we're hearing about, right? What we're experiencing. This is, I think, not just stuff that we're experiencing in our head, but we don't think about the physical impacts, right, that this is having on us? And sometimes just sort of like naming that, like what, what is that, what does that mean? So we think about it in our work context, which is what we're discussing here today. But I think it's also important to sort of name, like what's coming up, right, for you? As you are in the midst of all of this, like we're all trying to navigate this from both a personal and professional, professional level. And so, okay, so next slide, Jessica, please. So as we mentioned, we kind of gave you a little bit of a homework assignment. It's okay if you did not get a chance to complete that because we're going to take a little bit of time and have you do that now. But we wanted each, each of you to sort of share your three or four priority areas when you think about how we're addressing these immediate crises, right? And, you know, when you think about just three or four, right? It's like, how do you really sort of distill this down, right? Into that when, like all of this is a priority, maybe that's what you're thinking, right? But like what, what are those three or four priority areas that, you know, are central to what you are thinking? As again, we are trying to, in this facilitated conversation, get a sense of where we are in agreement, right? Where there's some divergence, where there are places where we can collaborate and kind of learn and grow from one another. And so I'm going to give each of you an opportunity to respond to this. And I want you to try and just kind of list, right? So right now, we're not going to get too much into the explanation piece because we have a bigger chunk of our conversation where you can kind of dig a little bit deeper into this. But right now, just sort of what does that list look like for you? What would you name on this list as your three or four top priority areas? As you're thinking about the crises that we are currently experiencing in the midst of? So would it be helpful to give, let, give me, give you all like a minute or two? Or are you ready to jump in? I can do either way. What we need? We ready to just go for it?
I'm ready to go.
Okay, I see thumbs up. All right. So since you came off mute first, Commissioner Maps, you get, you get to volunteer first. So just name those, those three or four areas for everyone.
I'm deeply concerned about, you know, certainly all the, all the issues that were on the slide. But in addition to those, or the issues I'm going to talk about also appear on this slide, I think quite literally. I'm concerned about public safety. And here, I assume we're just interested in broad, public, broad areas. I could break that down into more specific issues like gun violence, reducing, reducing lawlessness, reducing disparities in arrest rates for people, people of color. I don't know if you want that level of detail now?
Not yet, not yet. Okay. So if you just say public safety, that's good.
Okay, public safety, housing stability, houselessness and livability.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
I'm jotting notes too as we're going. Okay, Commissioner Hardisty, you ready?
Yes, I am. And again, you just want the headlines. You don't want the details, right?
Just, just the headlines right now.
So community safety, smart transportation and houselessness.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mayor.
Safety, homelessness and livability.
All right, Commissioner Ryan?
Oh, I was unmuted. Houselessness, emergency, community safety and economic survival.
Did you say houselessness emergency? Was that together?
Yeah.
Okay, so houseless, emergency, community, say them again for me.
Community safety would be the second one. And then the third one I mentioned was economic survival.
Okay.
And prosperity.
Okay, would you put those together?
I would say economic survival slash recovery.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. And Commissioner Rubio?
I, I have the broad headlines, houselessness and housing crisis. Economic recovery for businesses and community. And then I have community safety and engagement. And then I have arts community recovery.
Okay. Thank you very much. Excellent. Okay, so hopefully you were listening to your colleagues and you noticed that there is some overlap in the things that you have named, right, at a broad level. And that's a wonderful thing, right? So you're going to make this super easy. We'll be done in like five minutes. No. Just teasing, just playing. So with that being said, I want to, so here's the thing. So even as we are naming and sort of hearing, right? We're hearing houselessness, housing, right? I heard economic stability, recovery, livability. That was another one that I heard come up a couple of times. So even though we're saying the same words or phrases, okay, follow me. How we define that can often be very different. Is everybody with me, right? So what houselessness, like what, what that looks like or how that's defined for Commissioner Ryan? Even though Commissioner Rubio, right, might have said houselessness too? They could be thinking about some very different things, hey? And so that's where we really sort of have to, yes, we name those priorities. But as we're thinking about this information, what perspective? Like how are we entering into a conversation about houselessness? And how is that maybe the same or different from a colleague? Because here's the thing, that's going to impact the goals and the sort of things that you want to do to get after that. So if there's some, some, I won't say just disagreement, right? But just sort of some different ways of which that, you know, how, how you're defining that? When it gets down to like, okay, what are the goals that we're going to use to kind of get after it? It can look, it could be all over the place, right? Because we don't have a synergy around how we're really defining this work. Okay, so we're going to kind of challenge you a little bit here. Okay, so, um, and Jessica, we can just stay on this slide for just a couple of more minutes and then we'll go to the, to the next one. So public safety came up, right? And then Commissioner Mack started to kind of dig a little bit, right? To drill down a little bit into what that means for him. I want to just give you an opportunity, okay, quick opportunity, to really sort of share, like what is, when you say public safety is a priority for you? How are you defining? How are you, what is your perspective around public safety? Because that came up, right? Other folks said it too, right? What does that mean to you, Commissioner Maps?
Sure. There are three things I'd like to focus on in this area. Reducing gun violence, reducing lawlessness, which we might, I think of, of operationalizing as reducing the number of times we declare riots every month, for example. And the third issue that I'd like to highlight here would be reducing disparities in arrest rates for African Americans.
Okay, thank you.
I have more, but I think I should.
No, that's good. That's good to kind of get. So you're hearing like what's coming up for Commissioner Maps as he's saying public safety, okay? Okay, Mayor, you said safety. You didn't say public safety, but I'm going to just call on you. You said safety. What's coming up for you? So you heard Commissioner Maps, right, kind of drilled down a little. How would you drill that down?
Not dissimilarly. You know, from, from our planning, we know that, that we already agree as a council that everybody in Portland deserves to feel safe and secure and protected by our local public safety programs. Local governments have historically provided public safety services through police agencies and only police agencies. And as leaders, I think we increasingly appreciate that safety looks and feels different to different people. We understand that more and different tools are needed, that police agencies are part of a broader public safety system, but they are not the system. So my focus would be twofold. Number one, ensuring that the Portland Police Bureau is responding to the right situations in the right way, equipped with the right training and the resources to meet the need. And second of all, to ensure that we continue to build out our broad array of complementary city services so that whatever the situation, we have a variety of tools to respond with and that we're able to help every Portlander feel safe, secure and protected in our community and the resources that the system needs to meet the need. And again, what I heard in terms of commonality, this work needs to be urgent. It needs to be holistic. It needs to be thoughtful and it needs to be collaborative. And, you know, there's sort of, you know, maybe five key watchwords or phrases I'm thinking about when I'm thinking about how to achieve these two things. It's gun violence reduction and the work that we do through OVP and our regional partners, a coordinated citywide approach to public safety event planning. That includes both police and non-police responses, coordinated budget proposals, savings and alignments along the lines of what we're working with through our joint public safety budgeting, community input and council clarity on Corps Patrol services and, you know, what the appropriate level of support and resources are for the police bureau. And of course, non-policing responses to traditionally police responses like the Portland Street Response Launch. So that's, that's what I think about when I think about safety.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, Commissioner Hardisty, you also mentioned community safety. So what's coming up for you when you, when you define that? What does that look like?
When I talk about community safety, some of the components are actually continuing to work with the Office of Violence Reduction to reduce gun violence in our community. Working with Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing around developing a truth and reconciliation process, implementing the new police oversight system, better tracking and response to the increase in domestic violence. And then of course, rolling out and expanding Portland Street Response.
Okay, thank you. Excellent. Okay, Commissioner Ryan, you also mentioned community safety?
Yes. I just use three categories, I guess, under this. Police accountability, building the mental health system with accounting. And then safety on our streets, which others have mentioned with more probably tactical, reducing gun violence, just a general feeling that a lot of people don't feel safe right now.
Okay, thank you. I had a little voice in the background that needed some attention. Listen, the little one is out of here, the grown, the older one. I got, I got rid of the little one. Now the 10-year-old, like, I'm like, you can't do that to me. Sorry about that. Okay, um, and Commissioner Rubio, you mentioned community safety as well.
I would, I put down reimagining a safety system that centers community and is representative of community. And this includes implementation of police accountability system and also the hiring of the Public Safety Director. And then I also put authentic community engagement. Specifically, I'm interested in engaging Latinx youth in the immigrant community in this important discussion and conversations about what, what this should be. And then last, I put more upstream programs that services aimed at youth and, and community connection.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Okay, so I want to talk a little bit for a moment about livability. Because I believe Commissioner Maps and the mayor named it as livability, right? So those words came up. However, I don't want to leave out Commissioner Hardisty, Commissioner Ryan or Commissioner Rubio if something that you named would be considered livability. So I wanted to make sure that we are, because again, the words, you know, we're trying to, trying to get some synergy here. But I heard livability specifically from the mayor and Commissioner Maps. Of our other three commissioners, is there anything in what you named in your priorities that you in your mind would say, oh yeah, that's livability. I just didn't call it that, right? So I want to make sure I'm given the opportunity for that, so.
So, Dr. Smith, it would be helpful if Commissioner Maps and the mayor shared what their definition of livability is.
Okay, for sure. We can do that. And then I can get your, get your juices flowing. Okay, so Mayor, when you said livability, what, how are you defining that? What does that mean to you?
I, I'm speaking very narrowly to the urgency of what's in front of us today. So that is the condition of public right-of-ways, parks, private right-of-ways, litter collection, graffiti abatement, biohazard cleanups and the like. That's, that's what I'm talking about when I'm specifically referring to livability.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Maps?
I would echo the themes that the mayor talked about. The three themes that I actually wrote down for today would be increasing the economic viability and vitality of our neighborhoods. I'd like to see a reduction in the number of disorder type calls placed to 911. And I'd like to continue our march towards building complete neighborhoods. You know, neighborhoods with parks and grocery stores and whatnot.
Okay, so some, some similarity in what you were naming there. Okay, does that help Commissioner Hardisty to kind of give you a sense of what they're calling in their mind, livability?
It does. I actually, with the, the mayor's definition actually is more along, what is the continuum of services for our houseless community members, right? And how do we make sure that we are providing some basic services for those folks so that they're not in the right of way and we don't have houseless people on every three-way exit? And the biohazards that are associated with people who don't have a safe place to do what humans do. And then what I heard from Mingus was really more like tactics to create livability, right? I love the idea about complete neighborhoods. I don't think we've had that conversation for a decade or so. So it is interesting to, to have someone bring up the whole idea of what is a, what is a, what's a livable neighborhood and what's a, what's a complete neighborhood, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't disagree with anything that either Commissioner Maps or Mayor Wheeler said. I, I just think that we talk about it in different ways. So I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with any of it.
Good. And I think you, you brought in that overlap, right? With what's happening with our houseless community, right? Like how does that also sort of feed into what we, what we talk about when we say livability? So very good. Okay, Commissioner Ryan or Commissioner Rubio? Anything to add or anything from your list of priorities that there may be some overlap as you think about livability? You've heard what your colleagues are thinking?
Well, with Commissioner Maps's definition about those whole neighborhoods or the complete, that really struck me as well. So I feel like while I didn't explicitly say that in, in mine, I feel like that, that concept is resonant with what I have been thinking as I, I went through these as well. It's, it, to me, the livability is the quality of life that we're providing equitably to everybody, every resident in Portland. They should all have access to, to those complete neighborhoods and to that experience of feeling safe.
Good, thank you. And Commissioner Ryan, anything to add?
I think for me, livability comes to each neighborhood and as a core experience when we actually provide the services necessary for the houseless community. And so we see a real change there. And so we see a real change there, that we start to experience real community safety. And when we have some economic renewal. And so I guess it's an overarching word that I would use to describe the three priorities that I listed. And so I just chose to not use one of them as bad as my language of the three strategies. But more maybe an overarching goal of them.
Yeah, you're along top of it. I love this.
Yeah, I think it's seen more like an arch, if you will.
Okay, very good, right?
I, I enjoyed hearing the detailed descriptions of my colleagues, both the mayor and Commissioner Maps, but they met by that.
Excellent. Okay, um, I'm going to pick another one here, because this has come up, let's see. So Commissioner Maps talked about housing stability. And, um, let's see if it was named that way in other places. So we've got housing stability, we've got housing, right, just kind of in general, that was a term that came up. So Commissioner Rubio said housing, as I said, Commissioner Maps said housing stability. The mayor, I think you named it as housing. Am I correct? I'm trying to read my, my chicken scratch here.
No, I specifically named it more broadly as homelessness.
Homelessness, okay, so homelessness. And Commissioner Ryan named it as well, houselessness. Commissioner Hardesty, I think you said houselessness. And so housing, houselessness, housing stability. Want to make sure we're on the same page around that. I think we are. But just kind of, just a brief conversation there, because I, so the housing stability, just, just that term sort of stands out, right? But I want to give Commissioner Maps an opportunity. Does that also sort of encompass, right, these, these terms of houselessness, homelessness? Right? Is that what you're thinking as you're thinking about housing stability? I want to make sure I'm giving some opportunity, because that was a phrase you specifically used.
Sure, and in my priorities, I actually broke out housing stability and homelessness as being two separate issues. And I think of them as being obviously related with two separate issues. It may help to kind of break down housing stability even further from my point of view. I think there are some short-term problems, which are frankly just COVID-related. You know, that boils down to rent relief, aid to landlords, and developing a plan for avoiding an eviction crisis when, when our eviction moratorium is lifted. So I think that's very important, very short-term. This is something I hear about a lot. And then there's a long-term or medium-term piece of housing stability, which basically gestures towards Commissioner Ryan's portfolio, developing new affordable housing units. You know, building more, making sure that we have enough affordable housing. If I were to break it down into, it seems like here, we're not so much focused on our day-to-day bureaus, but sort of merchant issues that are pressing. And if I had to do it that way, I would really focus in on the COVID crisis and how it relates to housing. I think we've done okay so far, but I think it's a delicate balance and getting this right is very important.
Okay, thank you. And that's helpful. So and I apologize, housing stability and, and houselessness were separate for you, although related, right? But separate. I think that's important to note. Because I don't want to, you know, I want to make sure I'm honoring it, or honoring what it is that you, you've identified. So, colleagues, anything that resonates with you there? Are you, based on what Commissioner Maps has said, are you sort of seeing that as a, maybe a part of the conversation around houselessness, homelessness, the way in which you've, you've named it? Anything different, anything to add before we move forward?
So I will just say that I, I support Commissioner Maps' description of, of, of housing stability. And I think as we talk houseless, we've got thousands of people that are living on the street now. We've got tens of thousands of people with the potential to live on the street after March, when the moratorium expires or when the, I'm sorry, when the back rent will be due for people who in fact have not been able to pay rent since March of last year. So for me, that's where the crisis is, is what's going to happen in sixty-plus days when all of a sudden landlords are fast-tracking people for eviction. And so for me, that's a really, that, that's, if, if we're talking housing stability, we've got tens of thousands of people that are unstable now. And everything depends on governmental actions to keep them in their homes. But we also have a significant chronically houseless population that is consistently moved and pushed to other parts of the city. And we're not actually serving that population well at this moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty.
Our question, Dr. Smith, on this. Talking specifically now, are you getting our feedback on homelessness or houselessness broadly? Or are you getting our feedback on housing specifically?
The way I, I specifically started with Commissioner Maps' phrasing of housing stability, because he was the only one that phrased it that way. And so I wanted to open it up to see if the way in which he was, I didn't, part of that was I didn't realize he had housing stability and houselessness, right? It's two separate categories. But like, was there anything in hearing housing stability that linked to, in your mind, what you said about houselessness, right? Like, were you thinking, like, in hearing that, were you thinking, oh, that's houselessness for me, right? Like that, I didn't name it that, but that's what's coming up for me, because he was, he was the only one that phrased it that way. Does that make sense, Mayor?
Yeah, i- i- it does. And I would argue, yes, of, of course, housing stability is a key part of it. You, you cannot separate housing stability or the lack of housing stability from the homeless crisis that we're experiencing. And, and I guess maybe the reason I, I interpreted it slightly more broadly is I, I, I see there being two aspects to homelessness. I'm graced, greatly generalizing here. So don't hold this against me. But there is the longer-term work that we do around rental protection, housing stability, regulatory ordinances around eviction, the work we do with our good partners at Multnomah County around the Joint Office of Homeless Services, which focuses on prevention. It focuses on transitional housing support. It focuses on mental health and substance abuse support. And obviously, the work that we do jointly through the Housing Bureau and our, our regional partners around housing stock development and subsidized housing. But I separate that from the urgent crisis that is before us today. That, that, in my mind, everything I just described is a longer-term approach to stabilizing people in their housing. But I also want to put a highlight on the need, and I think Commissioner Hardesty raised this, and I don't want to put words in her mouth. But we need a FEMA-like response to the crisis we are seeing right now. Just with the overwhelming numbers of people who are living on our sidewalks and in our public right-of-ways. It is creating a multitude of problems, not only for those people who are living in those conditions out in the elements, but without access to hygiene, without access to toilets, hand washing, laundry services, connection to other social services that they need. We have this exploding crisis on our streets today, and it requires a large-scale, focused, and immediate, urgent response, like a FEMA-like response, to get as many people as quickly and humanely off our sidewalks as possible. And I've started in my mind to separate the FEMA-like response that we need yesterday from those longer-term system supports that we're going to continue to be engaged in years from now. There, there is a problem that needs to be addressed today. And so that's why I separate those two things.
I think that's very helpful. And kind of going back to Jessica's intro around like what's short-term, like what's like right now, right, in the next twelve to eighteen months? And what are the things that we are kind of planning for, right, as we're moving forward? And we know we can't lose sight of that, right? But what, as you said, is, is the immediate need right now, right? So I thank you for articulating that, and your colleagues are nodding their heads as well. Anyone else want to add to this before we go on? We've got just a couple of more, and then I want to pivot us to our exercise to kind of look at what you named in a different way, a little bit deeper. So any other comments specific to this? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, Dr. Smith, if I'm hearing you right, any more comments on houselessness?
The house, houseness, houses, housing stability, right? Just, just this kind of, I think there seems to be some general consensus about this, so I don't want to spend, you know, a lot of time on it. But I want to make sure that we are.
Well, I, I, I'm okay with that we're spending a little bit of time here. It's probably the number one priority that every voter is talking about. So I think that I, I liked everything that's been said so far. And I do believe that, you know, the North Star on this is stable housing, that maybe could be measured, that someone's in stable housing for three years and is, you know, using services and working. And, you know, so there's that. Then there's people on the streets. My, my point is, as a system, as leaders, we failed to build a system from the streets to stable housing. So there's a lot of silos and little pockets in between. But what is the overarching system that we as government leaders in both the city and the county are behind that move, that moves someone? A very challenging process that goes from the streets to stable housing. And since we are known as a, as a region to have really, really high proportionality of chronically housed, those with mental health issues, those with substance abuse issues, and those who have been houseless for over a year. That's why it feels like absolutely what's been said, an emergency, a FEMA-type response is needed. Because it's so chilling when you're just walking around, driving around town at this time. So I think for me, it's such a shared responsibility with the county, since so much of this is in the area of behavioral health. And, and we're, and they have most of the employees, if you will, that do a lot of the work to provide those services with this population. And so I just want to make sure I'm always articulating that it's a shared responsibility with the county for sure.
Okay, good. Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And that might be your kind of drilling down into, as we begin to think about some goals to get after some of these priorities.
That we don't have any metrics that really, there's no real data that, at any given time, that shows how many people are in any, any one of those parts of the continuum. And what is, what practices help one move from one place to the other? And so, you know, I, I think I just want to say out loud right now that the sector, if you will, has been amazing over the decades to put this patchwork together. And then just the last five years or so, we now have significant resources that are coming in, and especially with Here Together. So it's like, what's the pivot from, say, the home for everyone to the Here Together type response that we can all get behind? That's both the county and the city that's shared.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this? We're going to talk for a moment about economic recovery. And I don't want to lose Commissioner Hardesty's point around smart transportation, because that was one that stood out. Not in a bad way, Commissioner Hardesty, don't take that. Don't take that the wrong way. Commissioner Rubio, anything else on our, our conversation around houselessness, homelessness, housing stability?
Thank you. So I, I, I agree with what everyone said and about the short-term distinction from the long-term as well, or the, the overarching goals as well. I do want to say an essential component of the short-term must include culturally specific services so that we are able to address root causes that are really specific to the experience of, of the communities. Especially those that are disproportionately overrepresented. And how, how, how this and homelessness shows up differently in different communities.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Rubio. And Commissioner Hardesty, yes?
Excuse me, Dr. Smith, before you move on, I just wanted to make a case for in this, in the short term, I suspect that many of the hotels and brand-new apartment complexes that are brand spanking new and empty will end up on a foreclosure block some way, shape, or form. And it would be my hope that the city is like all over those opportunities. Because honestly, if you think about all the empty, overpriced apartments that are in the city of Portland right now, we could actually house every houseless person today. But they, they, but the people who have them would rather they be empty until they can make big money on them. Because, you know, it's already built, so I guess they're not losing any money in the process. I don't, I don't, I don't understand how that process works. But what I would hope is that we are economically prepared to take advantage of these opportunities as they come up. And that we identify as the city, what are the rules that we can use to expedite those kind of processes if necessary?
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, kind of getting at some of what could be some goals and some ways that we get after this. Yes, please go ahead, Commissioner Ryan.
No, I like, I like what's going on here. We could just stay here for a little while. I mean, I have some lived experience where putting a houseless, chronically housed person into a housing unit wouldn't have worked. And so what are the behavioral health services that are going to be invested as a part of the system so there can be stable housing for that individual? So I, I just wanted to, I guess, put more voice into the fact that it's so not just about housing. It's about behavioral health services and peer-to-peer services.
I guess the question is, do we know the percentage that that is so, right? Because I don't, I don't want to assume because somebody's houseless that they need social service support. People are houseless because they can't afford to live in the city of Portland. And so I think we need data to figure out what is the percentage of our chronically houseless community members who, even if you put them in housing, they could not be successful without wraparound supports. So I, you know, and I don't know that we've had that conversation.
Well, the last point in time count, which is now pretty dated, because there's about a year lag anyway. And so it was in twenty nineteen in January, so two years ago. It was a really high percentage of those who are chronically houseless are, are also folks that are suffering from mental health or substance abuse. It's like seventy percent, what was what that revealed, is I believe. And so it is a high percentage of the chronically housed, which is over a year.
And what is the percentage of people who are houseless that we perceive as chronically houseless?
Oops, I've heard, again, that the data's old. But it's a pretty high percentage. And what I've also heard is that when they've compared it to other, other regions around the country, other cities, that ours is the highest, like, we're at a much higher level. And, and that doesn't shock anyone, because if you've looked at Oregon's ranking in mental health services and as a system, we all know this started back in the Reagan administration nationally, but as a state, we've failed to build that system. We're, we're always ranking between forty-fifth and fiftieth in terms of that mental health system. So that's part of this urgency crisis, which is why it's such a shared, I think, such a shared responsibility with the county.
I appreciate that, Commissioner, because I, for me, I just don't, I, I don't want to start with the assumption that without mental health support services, we can't house people, because I don't agree with that. I, I think everybody needs a house, right? And then we figure out what else people need. That's just my personal opinion, but I appreciate your.
No, no, it's, you know, there's a lot of different, one reason why we have to keep getting better data sets is because of this conversation. But of our unsheltered population, over fifty percent are chronically, are, are chronically homeless.
Let me just say that I bet COVID has doubled that number. Because if people were on the edge before COVID and they lost their minimum wage job, we don't know what the impact of that has been. So I, again, I'm just cautious about putting percentages to houseless folks because the, how, I, I, people are houseless for a whole bunch of reasons.
Yeah, I think we could safely say we're in an, an emergency situation. And we can also safely say we've kind of failed to build a system for this. And so I think, you know, the first step to recovery is admitting you have a problem. And it seems like And it seems like uh, we just have to get really blunt about that.
So hopefully, uh, ballot measure one ten will help us resolve that. But the reality is that we don't have enough culturally competent service providers. So even if we had all the money in the world, uh, if we don't have culturally competent service providers that can provide the service, uh, we will still be in the same bag that we're in.
And that goes, I know.
This is such a complex conversation, so I'm glad that we could hang out here a little bit longer. But as you can tell by the, the passionate dialogue that, you know.
Yes, so, so let, let me jump in here because the, the conversation, Commissioner Ryan, that you're having with Commissioner Hardesty, i- in my opinion dovetails nicely with my differentiation between the FEMA-like response that's required right now. We, we don't have time to build the systems of care that are required. Or frankly, the level of affordable housing infrastructure that will be required in the near term to media, you know, to, to meaningfully address the urgency of the crisis, the emergency situation in front of us today. And so the question I have is what would our FEMA-like response be to this? How do we as quickly and humanely as possible connect people to a safe, dry, warm location with access to a toilet, hygiene facilities, and potentially access to services as quickly as possible? If we wait for Oregon to build a mental health infrastructure or for us to have anything close to on-demand substance abuse treatment, we're going to grow old in the process.
Yeah, that's, that's not what I was.
It's here today.
Yeah, I, I hear you. I wasn't getting at that.
No, I, I, I know you. I know you do.
But.
I, I just saw an opportunity there to dovetail the two.
Yeah, but I, where are we in the facilitation? Are, are we supposed to, obviously, we're having a great dialogue.
I, I told you at the beginning, I was gonna put some bumpers, right? But.
Commissioner Ryan, she left.
I did. I went, I went to go see what my daughter needed. No, I didn't do that. I'm here. Um, so I want us to have some conversation about economic recovery. And as I mentioned before, Commissioner Hardesty also brought up um, smart transit. And so I want to make sure that we leave some time for that because we do have another little piece of this that we want to get to. But this is good because this is, you're kind of doing the, the next step in this, in the conversation that we're having. And I'm happy it's being recorded and I'm sure other people are taking notes. I'm trying to scribble what I can because um, this is good stuff, right? And I think that um, as you were listening to one another, and I can ask this question at the end, you know, are you seeing those spaces where um, there is a shared understanding, a shared agreement, right? And um, you know, a way to collaborate and sort of get after some of this stuff, right? So um, if we feel comfortable, I want to move on to the conversation about economic recovery. Um, and specifically, Commissioner Rubio um, named it as economic recovery. And Commissioner Ryan, um, I think you had prosperity, economic recovery, kind of as some of the terminology you used as well.
Yeah, economic survival is what.
Okay, survival. Thank you. I can't read my writing. So um, I want to give you all an opportunity uh, to kind of share what you were thinking, like what's coming up as you are um, defining that. And it was not something named, um, Commissioner Maps, Commissioner Hardesty, or the mayor, kind of in their list of priorities. But again, sort of talking about this for a moment, are there places in the priorities that they did name? Like, oh, okay, right? Like that, that's something that, that fits, right? With what I'm thinking in another priority area. I just didn't call it that, just didn't name it that or sort of, you know, um, flesh it out that way. So um, Commissioner Rubio, since you've been, I want to hear your voice to make sure we got our voices in the space. So I will let you um, go first and kind of share what's, how are you defining economic recovery? What's coming up for you with that?
Thank you. Um, and also just to be transparent, I actually uh, entitled it economic relief.
Oh, thank you.
Recovery for business and community.
Thank you.
Because like everyone else, I was trying to really distill down as much as I, I can, but while keeping true to what I was saying. Um, I think, uh, well, some of the goals I had, uh, just very broadly, um, are, uh, you know, continue to strengthen and expand economic relief for small and BIPOC-owned businesses uh, during this time. Um, also strengthen um, existing food security systems in our community so that people have enough and have what they need and that our food pantries and our systems are not running bare um, or empty as they are uh, currently. Um, also uh, to continue support for workers that are ineligible currently for state funds and federal funds via the Oregon Worker Relief Fund. And then uh, last, I have um, significantly increased, um, or meaningfully increased our city's capacity. Uh, and, and this means partnering with other jurisdictions as well, as, as, as needed to provide uh, digital access during this time as well. I do feel that this is part of um, an urgent need.
Okay, thank you. And sorry, Commissioner Rubio, want to make sure I said it correctly. So economic recovery slash relief for business and community. Okay.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I forgot one more.
Yeah, please.
Very important. It, it might be more of a strategy uh, rather than its own goal. But uh, to make sure that we expand um, the city's language accessibility to ensure that the broader pub, public has um, access to this information. That is a huge gap that has been happening ongoing and people are working to close that gap. Um, but um, as a tactic, uh, for example, prioritizing the pay def- differential uh, and starting with community-facing programs or essential uh, uh, persons in, in bureaus that are essential to this uh, relief or recovery um, would be a strategy.
Okay, excellent. Right, so some things there around BIPOC business, some things around communication in our communities, what that looks like. Um, okay, Commissioner Ryan, this was another area that um, you named as a priority specifically. So I want to hear what you're thinking there and then I'll give some time for your colleagues to respond.
Yeah, much what I've heard around economic survival, uh, I, I was hearing from Commissioner Rubio. You know, just getting down to food, um, when the dialogue was about what are we going to do after the moratorium's lifted? So as a council, what is our work plan uh, to prepare for that? What's going to feel like a cliff perhaps? So there you go. Let's add another emergency to this. Um, then there's those that have been successful, if you will, in this city, investing in this city, providing a lot of jobs for Portlanders. And um, you know, all you have to do is look, it was actually published, I think, in Lament Week yesterday. Um, the reputation of Portland by, say, real estate investors has taken a really gripping nosedive. Um, we're like sixty-sixth, I think, out of eightieth, and just a few years ago, we were like number two. So I can't look at that and not react to it as um, a concern, a growing concern. And it, and our economic survival and then um, recovery is so dependent on the other issue we were just talking about. Um, and so it, it builds upon it. The houselessness emergency is in the way of thinking that we could turn that around. Perception is reality and, and as proud as Portland's been over the years, this is pretty humbling to see um, us make such a dramatic nosedive. Um, and so that's why it's really important that I think we provide really good services for those that want to invest in the city. Because that's um, how we feed the coffers for our services for the houselessness and for other um, causes that um, are part of the value system that we have as a city and as a council. So um, I'm really concerned about revenue streams.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ryan.
And this is like definitely going long-term, like what's happening now is gonna, you think our budget's tough this year? If this perception rate stays there and the investments continue to plummet, where will we be in budget dialogue two years or three years from now?
Okay. Y'all have me wanting to hop in as an ad hoc commissioner, but I can't do that.
I sit down instead of being a facilitator, right?
I'm like, dang it, I want to respond. Okay, Commissioner Hardesty, that's not what we're doing today. Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to say, I, um, economic um, ability is certainly something that I care about and it's a priority. I didn't put it on my list because I was trying to be fugal on my list. Um, but I will say that the work that uh, the mayor and I have been able to do with Prosper Portland uh, since this COVID crisis started, has been some really phenomenal work. I mean, I, I, I was not a big fan of PDC and wasn't that excited about Prosper Portland. But it is clear that they have embraced uh, um, leading with race. And they've done it in a way that is both uh, transparent uh, and has had a big impact on BIPOC communities. And so um, it, it is definitely on my agenda and something I care greatly about. I just didn't put it on my top three priority list. So I'm glad that uh, Commissioner Rubio and Commissioner Ryan had it on their list because I can champion it with them.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty.
Thank you.
Comments, um, Mayor, Commissioner Maps?
Uh, Commissioner Maps, did you want to go ahead and then I'll jump in after you?
You're on mute, Commissioner Maps.
Sorry about that. Um, obviously, I agree. I think that um, economic recovery is incredibly important. And another way to think about this um, would be COVID recovery, COVID management. If you take a look at my list, a lot of that, my list also kind of gestures towards that, especially on housing stability. My sort of top three issues really are about COVID recovery or at least surviving the COVID crisis. Um, I also think that, you know, fundamentally, the way that we are going to get our economy going um, is to conquer this uh, virus. Um, and so that's a piece that I'm really focused on. I'd like to see us uh, work with our partners at the county at this, in the state to get um, as much vaccine in people's arms as fast as we can. Because I think ultimately that's our way to kind of fix this. But obviously, in the meantime, people need to eat, they need to, you know, uh, school doesn't work unless you have a working computer and internet access. Uh, and uh, making your rent or your mortgage payment is incredibly um, uh, important too. And uh, just access to healthcare. So it's, it's very important. I think I might start with the vaccine piece, uh, partly because I think we need to be doing much better on that. And it's a mechanical task that I think if we just kind of, yeah, gave them the convention center and every other big space and got the fire department out there, uh, giving shots, we could actually bend that curve a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maps and Mayor. Anything to add on this point?
Yeah, I, I do. First of all, um, you know, since we have a lot of our bureau directors here, I, I, I want to acknowledge, I think the city's done a really great job with regard to the COVID recovery and our allocation of cares dollars. The quick way in which we organize to support both households and small businesses in terms of household prosperity, uh, housing support and small business support. In particular, we focused on BIPOC communities because they were the first and the hardest hit by the impacts of the, the pandemic and the economic downturn. Um, so I, I just want to acknowledge that this council already has a very strong record on that front. Obviously, we're going to continue to prioritize recovering from the COVID pandemic and its resulting economic impact. Uh, shared economic prosperity has been, will continue to be, I believe, a priority of everyone on this council. Uh, the reason I didn't mention economic prosperity in my top three was number one because we have a brutal facilitator who ascribes to the Roman tradition of only allowing three when the list should probably be longer than that. But.
It or four. I said or.
Since we're on this one, um, I actually believe I did prioritize uh, our employers in the list that I put forward. Because when I meet with our employers, whether they're large corporations or whether they're small mom and pop businesses, other than the obvious, which is they're closed because of COVID or they're greatly uh, reducing their revenues because of COVID, what they mention is safety, homelessness and livability. Those are the issues that they routinely mention over and over and over again is be, as being impediments to their ability to be successful in this city. And uh, I share Commissioner Ryan's concern about the real estate profile that, that was mentioned, I believe, in Lament Week. Um, and again, their lack of confidence isn't just because of the closure of the economy. They're comparing us head to head with other cities. And the reason they are frustrated by the city of Portland and believe that we are a higher risk proposition uh, is because of some of these other issues related to safety, homelessness and livability. And um, so I, I just want to acknowledge, you know, that, that all of these things, as I said upfront, they're related. We, we, we can't pull one thread out without touching all the other pieces of this.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. So um, if there's nothing else on this particular point, I want to allow Commissioner Hardesty to talk a little bit around um, smart transit. Because that was something that um, she specifically named, um, that was not um, repeated, right? So I want to make sure we give some space for that. And then if colleagues have um, comments uh, or questions to respond, in response to her. So Commissioner Hardesty.
Uh, excellent. Thank you. Uh, so when I think about smart transit, I think about um, as we are uh, attempting to reach our climate goals, um, are there opportunities uh, to support our small restaurants across the city by closing off some streets to auto traffic? Um, I'm also really thinking about, is it possible when we are in the rebuild mode coming out of COVID, to really think about what would a car-free downtown look like, right? Uh, I just, uh, and uh, and I say this because I think that there is this misperception that one day we're going to go back to business as usual, right? COVID will be behind us and we're going to flip a switch and life will be as it was prior to COVID. I think that there's a lot of people that believe that and I am not one of them. I believe life will be radically different post-COVID and our planning should reflect our new reality. Um, so as I think about smart transit, I think about, is there an opportunity to create international districts in different parts of the city that people can access for food and goods and services that are not um, tied to people getting in their automobiles and traveling somewhere? Uh, that's, uh, for me, that's one of the exciting things about uh, having transportation at this moment. Um, uh, let me also go back and um, I also want to think about how do we create opportunities for electric vehicle infrastructure in different parts of the city? So that we can assure that BIPOC community members have access to both building it and actually uh, being able to take advantage of using it. Um, I also want to make sure that uh, we are uh, identifying uh, federal resources that traditionally uh, federal uh, uh, transportation dollars have been all about freeway expansions. And I'm looking at for uh, federal resources to support um, a, a climate resilient uh, transportation department that is really focused on green um, uh, issues as compared to uh, uh, freeway expansions like we're so accustomed to. So when I say smart transit, those are some of the components under it. Oh, and one of the big ones is actually trying to identify a new funding source for P-Bot uh, that is not dependent on people driving automobiles and not dependent on people parking and parking garages. Uh, uh, we are facing a forty million dollar budget deficit because our normal funding mechanisms are not, uh, A, uh, have been uh, impacted by COVID, A. And B, they should be impacted by our climate justice uh, resiliency goals, right? And uh, so that's, that's going to be a real big one is trying to identify new funding opportunities to create a smart transit system, smart transportation system.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. Uh, are there comments, responses from colleagues?
Um, I generally support Commissioner Hardesty's vision here. Uh, I think it's uh, it's innovative and I'm happy to work with her to make a lot of these things happen.
I also support it. It sounds uh, pretty in line with a lot of our goals, particularly around um, equity.
Okay, Commissioner Ryan, Mayor, anything here?
Yeah, it's um, it felt very connected to climate crisis. Um, you, I know it was stated, uh, transportation. You, I know it was stated, uh, transportation, um, but I, that's what I kept hearing. It's not in my top three or four, but I, I, I respect what I just heard.
And Mayor, anything from you?
Yeah, I, I appreciated it. It sounded more like the answer to a broader question. It sounded tactical. And, um, but I, I think it is in alignment with our stated goals around climate action and transportation equity. But I, I would see that as, as one of multiple strategies that, that are, are fulfilling the larger objective.
Yes.
But I, I, yeah, I want to say this. I, I actually love innovative and visionary thinking and I, I appreciate that. It's a good vision.
I did leave out, uh, continuing to prioritize investments in East Portland. But it's on my list.
Very good. Okay, um, and I just realized when I was looking down at my notes, Commissioner Rubio, you had a comment around the arts. And I don't want that to get lost and my apologies, um, so we will, and I think that will have covered everyone's list. Um, I want to make sure we give you some time for that and then we can pivot into, um, the next part of this, which I said, we've kind of been overlapping some of it. So it's not, it's all good. So Commissioner Rubio, you want to give a little bit more around, um, your priorities specific to the arts?
Sure, and, and it won't take very long, um, and the more, and you know, I, I originally debated whether this was, um, something immediate or if it comes, uh, later. Uh, but, um, I'm very interested in reactivating public spaces. And what that means for us in this time of, uh, having experienced a long disconnection, um, in community. Um, and maybe this could, uh, connect well with maybe, again, back to, uh, what Commissioner Maps indicated around, uh, complete neighborhoods. And maybe that's where it might, um, you know, uh, connect very nicely. Uh, but you know, this pandemic has required Portland to s- to stay home for, uh, a year now. And, um, in an effort to reconnect, uh, community with outdoor spaces in a way to build reconnections. I, I also am a very aware about the health implications of this net as well, so that it would require some thinking. But it would also require, or, uh, enable us to start to engage with the arts community. About how we, it, you know, the reemergence of our community together in public and what that might look like. Um, I don't quite know where that would fit in our sequencing or our timeline. But I think it's a way to, um, reengage with a really important part of our, um, of, um, our city, which is the art sector.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Uh, Commissioner Hardisty, yes.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Smith. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Rubio. I am a hundred percent in support of you. Uh, you may not know that I am the self-appointed music commissioner. I used to have this fight with, uh, Commissioner Nick Fish on a regular basis. Uh, but I think it would be exciting to bring the arts and the music community together. As we start re-emerging, because honestly, it's the, it's the arts and the music that actually feeds people soul. If, when, even when we don't have a lot else going on, right? So I am very happy to partner with you and figure out how we combine the arts. In a way that actually elevates those voices. And I believe the mayor actually had been working with BRAC to figure out how we, uh, maintain the public art. That's been created around the Black Lives Matters protests. And if that's the case, I think that that's also a very good opportunity for us to be respectful of the art. That was produced during this very trying time in our history and make sure that it moves with us into whatever the future holds.
I love that idea. Great.
Do I jump in on this? Um, I wa- I want to jump in on the amen chorus here. Um, I think it's great. And I, I think it, number one, I, I think there's a potential source of funding through this, assuming additional CARES dollars. And while some may not see it this way. I believe it is critically important as part of helping people heal and recover. From the COVID crisis. And let's, let's not kid ourselves. Um, mental health issues have risen dramatically while we've all been penned inside. Uh, alcohol and substance abuse has increased dramatically. Mental health issues alarmingly disproportionately, those experienced by young people have spiked. And frankly, we're, we are social creatures and as the restrictions ease. I hope we do have good plans to utilize our public spaces in ways that are effective. And help support, as we have as a council, our arts and culture community to get through the COVID crisis, just from an economic perspective. And also, as, as you said, Commissioner Rubio, um, wha- what's good for arts and culture is good for the soul. And, um, you two commissioners are in a uniquely excellent place to collaborate. Commissioner Hardisty, in her role as PBOT Commissioner, obviously controls a lot of our public right of ways. And, uh, PBOT has done some terrific work to respond quickly to the needs, the changing needs of businesses during the COVID crisis. You as arts commissioner are in a unique position to help with some of the ideas, uh, that you've put forth. And Commissioner Hardisty, I, I approve your appointment as our self-appointed music commissioner. Uh, we all, we all get a, you put our, our taste on the table as well, good, bad or ugly. Um, but I, I think this is a great area for council collaboration. And I think it will also, at some level, help rebuild civic pride. I think a lot of people feel that a lot of what was great about Portland has really dissipated. Over the course of the last year in particular, and I think a lot of that is just the loss of arts and culture and our culinary community. Uh, and our ability to socialize the way Portlanders like to socialize. And so this, this could be a really important stepping stone towards community recovery. And I, I appreciate you, Community, Commissioner Rubio, for raising it.
Okay, yeah, I went off topic while I was gone. I'm just teasing.
Dr. Smith, I, I had my hand up.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, uh, I wanted to jump in and, uh, I won't say too much, cause it's all been said. But I was gonna add music and film, um, to that term. And I always, uh, put arts under my, my comments about the economy and recovery. And it is all connected to those, um, those three areas of the vast arts, music and, um, film industries. They're a big part of our economic driver. So I'm all in. But I, I just want you to know, I had it under that category earlier, but I'm glad that we pulled it out. And gave it more attention. Since I come from the arts.
And I think I could make the, um, make it unanimous, I think the arts are an important part of our, um, city's economic recovery. Our spiritual recovery. And I think, uh, earlier today, we've ta- kind of talked about Portland's image problem right now. And I think, uh, reawakening, being the arts is a, another way of showing the world, um, a different face of Portland. The face of Portland that I think we all know and love. And it's critical. And I look forward to working with Commissioner Rubio and our new music commissioner to, uh, um, tell Portland's story again through the arts.
I've been a music commissioner for two years, so. I took it from Commissioner Fish, so.
You're doing a great job. All right, thank you.
We want to see what's in our music collection first.
Oh, you would love my music collection. It is very eclectic. It would not, you would be shocked.
No, no, I wouldn't be. I'm sure I wouldn't be, but we'll do that sometime. I'd love to see it and hear it.
Deal. Sorry, doctor, we get, we get sidetracked easily.
No, that's okay. This is part of, like, this is part of building community with one another, right? We can't just, it can't always just be business, right? Let's pull out some CDs and some records. I'm all for it. Okay.
Pull out some what? Pull out what?
I said, listen, li- listen. I don't own any CDs anymore. I use my phone, but.
Right next to the steam generator.
I just wanna, you know. Anywho. Okay, so if we feel good with, um, where we are at this point, I want to move us on. We've got about, um, thirty minutes or so. So Jessica, I know I, we probably could have changed the slide an hour ago. I'm sorry. But if you're, if you're, if you're still out there, we can go to the next slide. Okay, so, um, again, I told you, like, I'm a visual learner. I try and appeal to other people that might be, um, visual learners. Maybe, maybe not. But, um, for me, like, so this is a concept map. Um, and this is something that we won't necessarily, um, be able to complete in our time together today. But I think it's something that you could be thinking about as, our conversation has sort of morphed into people sharing some of their goals, right? As related to their priorities. But I think actually sort of gathering that and sort of getting that down to, and here it has six spaces, right? I, you know, this is just an example, right, of, of what this could look like. However many branches you have off of this, I think, you know, can vary. But this will really help you see. So if we're saying, for instance, and this is what I, I've sort of noted. Um, we've talked about community and public safety, houselessness, homelessness, um, housing stability. Has, has kind of a component o- of that. We've talked about livability, economic recovery and prosperity. Um, see if I'm missing anything, um. I think those are the kind of the big ones. Yes. And then we've had some, um, additional conversation around, um, the arts and smart transit, right? But if you were to take, let's just take for instance, houselessness, because we had a pretty rich discussion about that, um, a little while ago. And really put this in the center, right, in, in terms of our concept map here. Like, what are the goals? That in, in your mind, right, if we're really gonna tackle sort of this, this immediate need, this immediate crisis, this twelve to eighteen months. Like, what are the, the, the things that we need to be thinking about, um, as goals, as articulated goals? Um, to address, um, our, our crisis of houselessness, right? So that's kind of a, an example of how this would look, okay? So, um, questions about kind of this visual, pretty simple, right? But I think it's a way to sort of organize our thoughts. And again, I don't, we don't have time today necessarily for that. But I want you to be thinking about, um, for the priority areas. So the other thing we're gonna talk about before we, um, before we depart. Is, you know, we've got some commonality, what are kind of maybe those four, right? I'm gonna, you know, force you to sort of think, what are the four collectively? That you all can say, okay, these are the things that we're gonna move on. And then taking each of those four priorities and really creating a concept map for the goals, right? That we need to articulate to get after that, right? So that's sort of the next, in my mind, the next step. Doesn't have to be, but that's what I'm thinking. Okay, so we can see how that feels. Um, Jessica, can you go to the next slide? And, um, so this is around, like, where is the goal alignment? Where is there an issue or any divergence? Um, and, and here you can think goal priority, we've kind of, you know, sort of interwoven them in our conversation. And what are opportunities for collaboration? I heard that coming up, right? Immediately, there's some folks are like, yes, Commissioner Hardisty, I'm all about, let's have this conversation about, um, what are, what are trans- transportation and what transit looks like, right? And Commissioner Rubio, yes, let's get after the arts, right? I'm all on board for that. So certainly hearing opportunities for collaboration. Um, so where is there some alignment in what we're thinking? And here, I don't want to just, you know, goals, because we haven't had a chance to really flesh that out necessarily. Um, it's just sort of kind of organically come up, as you all were describing, the ways in which you define this work. But where are the places that you're seeing for alignment? I want us to spend just a little bit of time there. And is there anything that we are seeing as maybe an issue or, um, some divergence? So, um, and how are we going to name these? I think that, that's another piece. Um, because, you know, are we gonna say houselessness? Are we gonna say homelessness? Like, how are we going to name the priority, I think is also a really important part in terms of your alignment here. Okay, and hopefully that's making sense. Cause we don't want Commissioner Hardisty saying it's houselessness. And, you know, the mayor's like, well, I said it's homelessness, right? Like, so what are we going to have a shared agreement about, like, how we name this, okay? So Commissioner Hardisty has her hand up. Commissioner Ryan, is your hand up from previous?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay, all right. Want to make sure. Okay, so Commissioner Hardisty.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Smith. I was just gonna say, um, I was taught years ago to use the term houselessness. By people who were experiencing houselessness. Um, and the reason is that, uh, when you are houseless, wherever you are is your home. Right? So, uh, and so I adopted that language, uh, probably about a decade ago. Um, but I am, you know, it, whatever works for our team will be fine with me. But that is why that term has stuck with me, because houseless community members told me that that was the appropriate term.
Good, and thank you for that. So I was gonna kind of do a fist to five, right, to see where we are. First, um, I, you know, how are we feeling collectively about, I want you to kind of replace goal with priority here. Cause we're gonna, we have to dig into the goals a little bit more in a, in a pri- in a next session. But collectively, how are we feeling about houselessness? Um, if we're gonna name houses this, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty, for giving some background about why we're, we're naming it that. How are we feeling collectively? And are we in alignment with that as a priority, um, as a council? So five, yes, all on board. You know, we can kind of go from there zeros, like, I'm gonna log off the Zoom, I'm done for the day. Like, where, where, where are we? So if I can get a show of hands, where are we as, um, houselessness as a shared part, Mayor? You know I was a teacher. I see you over there texting. Okay.
Are you just waiting there, or was that a, yes, I'm in?
Um, it, it is definitely one of my top three priorities, along with safety and livability.
Okay, hold on, we're not there yet. Okay, so.
And I, I don't, I don't, uh, have a huge stake on, on how we name it. I think we know what we're talking about.
Okay, so five, so houselessness, are we feeling good based on Commissioner Hardisty's description of why we are naming it houselessness? Anyone have any opposition to that? Feel good about that? Mayor's like, that's all good?
Yeah, I, 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 I don't want to get hung up on the terminology, because then we go down this endless spiral. Um, uh, the, the only caution I want to throw out is a lot of people on our streets are lacking more than just a house.
And that we might be able to articulate as you think about your goals, Mayor, so I'll offer that. As maybe a way to make sure that we're capturing that. So absolutely right. Okay, so houselessness, so we are in agreement that that is, um, we're in alignment, um, with that as, um, a shared priority. Okay, so, um, next I want us to talk about, we've named it community and public safety. But before we sort of decide like where we are with that, are we, um, in alignment, fist to five? That that is a shared priority amongst the five? So let me see, hands, five, five, five. Okay, excellent. So, um, we can spend just a little bit of time talking about how we articulate that. I agree with the mayor, we don't want to get so hung up necessarily in, in the terminology, but I do think it's important that we're talking about it, um, the same. I want to offer that, right, like, so that there's not confusion, uh, when we are bringing these things up in, in other spaces. Uh, so we said community safety, we said public safety. Is it both? Can we do a community slash public safety? How are we feeling about that? So I want to hear from, from folks on that.
Sure, I'll step in. I, I've been using the word community safety for some time. Because I do think that our path going forward is shared responsibility with community and with community organizations. Whereas public feels like it's more of an internal, um, system only.
Okay.
That's why, I think that's the main reason why it just, it, I switched from public to community when I started thinking about it that way. And I've just never gone back, kind of like with the word houses news.
Okay, so we've got to vote for community.
And I would just say for me, um, I, I think the term public safety is most closely connected to police. And so when I say community safety, it's broader than just talking about police, right? Uh, I think the, uh, the public is, when you say public safety, you're thinking police officer. Uh, even though we have many more first responders than just police. Uh, I, I think the term just leads us to believe that we're talking police, and I think it's much broader than that.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, thoughts about, so we've got. Commissioner Haristy, Commissioner Ryan saying, community, Commissioner Rubio gave a thumbs up, community safety. Mr. Baxter, good? Okay, Mayor, anything? Good? Okay, so, community safety.
Well, I just want to make sure that the mayor, in his conversations, are you comfortable with that term, Mayor? Does it cause you any concern that people will not understand, uh, what you're articulating?
No, because I, I tend to, uh, articulate at great length what I'm thinking. And as I did in the introduction, I think people would. And as I did in the introduction, I think people would be very clear that when I'm talking about community safety, I'm not just talking about policing, that it goes well beyond that and requires partnerships and collaborations that go well beyond local law enforcement.
Excellent, excellent, thanks.
Okay.
Just wanted to check before we move.
No, I appreciate that, Commissioner Hardisty, you're absolutely right. Okay, so I next had livability. Right? Kind of as um, a couple of folks named it that, we had some discussion. Um, I want to see where our alignment is, uh, how are we feeling about livability as a um, shared priority, fist to five, let me see hands. Five, okay. Commissioner Ryan's off mute. Okay, so so Mayor, Commissioner Baxter, oh, Commissioner Hardisty, is that a five? Is that a?
I know, I did not have a five. I was trying to figure out how many fingers to put up, but I'm gonna wait and hear what Commissioner Ryan says.
Well, I'm stalling, because um, I'm trying to play this game here, thinking we have three. And I don't know, maybe I'm lost in the process, but um, I think a lot of us started commingling the word with the economy, but I don't want to put words into anyone's mouth. So for me, it was an overarching statement, but it didn't feel like one of the top three priorities. It's an outcome if we focus on these top three priorities, then we're gonna have livability. But that's in my little brain at this moment. So I'm uh, I, someone want to tell me, did you give me a different point of view on that? I'm still open. But right now, I don't have it as my top three priority.
Commissioner Rubio, were you trying to weigh in?
Uh, no, I I sort of am where, sort of where Dan Ryan is. Um, I think there were aspects of it, but I don't feel like I have thought it through as one singular concept, so that that's why it probably doesn't rank for me, but that's, but there were components of uh things that Commissioner Mount said that I really liked um in that, but yeah.
I think that's what I'm struggling with too, Commissioner Rubio, um, because the definitions I totally agreed with, right? But in my mind, mm mm, a lot of the work is in housing and houselessness, right? Um, so and and uh creating uh uh continuing to create livable neighborhoods, right, where people can have activity. Uh, I'm not opposed to livability, I just don't know if it was my, it it certainly would not be on my list of top priorities, right? I mean, I won't go out and talk bad about livability, but I, you know, it just, it it doesn't. Uh, the definitions I agree with, but the term livability actually feels different than what we talked about in the definition.
And I want to offer, Mayor, I see your hand. Might we, could this be, and kind of going back to Commissioner Ryan's um comment, could, are we maybe thinking about this as economic recovery or prosperity? Don't know, just putting that out there, right, because that's another another conversation that we had. So I just want to put that in the space. Mayor, your hand was up.
Yeah, I I appreciate it. And uh, whether it makes it in the top priorities for the council or not, I I'd like to continue to be point on this for the council. Um, I I believe it's extremely important, and I think it's extremely important for two reasons. Number one, uh, it gets to our sense of place and our civic pride. And I hear regularly and loudly from our constituents that they're deeply upset by the condition of public right of ways, parks, camps, roadways, sidewalks, uh buildings. And uh, in answer to your specific question, does this have something to do with economic prosperity? The answer is absolutely, insofar as a failure to address it can potentially choke off economic opportunities. And um, so I I would continue to prioritize it. The second reason I'd continue to prioritize it is this doesn't fall on anybody else's shoulders. This is the city's responsibility. When it comes to to my narrower, you know, livability is one of those huge words, it's like sustainability. Um, and for those of us who are old enough to remember the word synergistic, um, i- it it can be very broadly interpreted. I mean it fairly narrowly. I mean trash, litter, needles, graffiti, uh, and stuff that should not be on in the public right of way that is. And people look to us to manage that. And frankly, we're we're getting much better at it, but we're not there yet. And I would like to continue to prioritize that, because if people look around their city and they feel like um, it it looks more like a dystopian future than the beautiful, dynamic, innovative and uh environmentally conscious city that they're used to seeing, um, i- it it will ultimately drag us down. So I I would continue to prioritize it in that narrow sense and would like to offer myself to continue to lead on behalf of the council on this subject, whether whether it's a council priority or not.
Hey, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, could I ask a question? I mean, so is the plan at the end of the day that we have four or five priorities that are council priorities?
I think um, we can talk about that. And Jessica, if you kind of want to weigh in, like, that, I think we are trying to certainly give everybody an opportunity to articulate what their priorities are and kind of the goals and and getting after those priorities, but but having um some shared understanding of what that means is really gonna help, like, so from a bureau director's perspective, like, oh, okay. I know the council has articulated community safety and houselessness. Like, what am I doing within my bureau to make sure that, you know, we're we're getting after that, right? Like, so that, I think, is, you know, it gives you all some direction, gives Bureau, you know, citywide some direction. And so I I'll let Jessica kind of chime in, but um.
Let me just say that it feels like that three of them, three of what we've listed as priorities are priorities that we all share, right? And there are other uh work that all of us are involved in that we may or may not share as priorities. And so I would offer, if the goal is to have, say, five, or I don't know what the magic number is, whatever the magic number is, and the mayor feels really strongly about livability, I'd be happy to be a five and support the mayor on livability, as these are the council's top five priorities, right? It doesn't mean that I have to take it on as my own personal mission, but it just means I would be supporting the mayor um, and continuing to articulate his vision around livability, right? So I I'm just trying to get a sense. If we're gonna be limited to three, then the mayor's on his own with livability. But if there's an opportunity for us to, I I think that it uh uh it would be really significant for the public if, in fact, we had a top five that we all agreed that uh that whether all five of us are working on it or not, at least all five of us agree, these are the council's top priorities. And if that's our goal, then I would be a five and support the mayor.
I support that strategy.
Yeah, absolutely. There was not a magic number, by the way, so I want to put that out there, yeah.
I have a question. I, I thought one of our goals, though, is to make sure that we're all aligned, no matter what our bureau assignments are, on the goals that we, the the top priorities that we come up with. So.
Yeah, that would be true.
So that that's where I I want to pause right now, then, because um, so far, the three that we've identified, I I'm sensing there's all five of us are all in, no matter what our bureau assignments are, we know that we're accountable to these top priorities. I I continue to think that livability is, um, when you do these three things, you have livability. So to me, it's connected to our top three priorities as as an overarching statement. Um, and so I guess that's the only reason I don't have it as one of the top three, because I think it's, it summarizes all three of them. That's just the way I think.
Can I say something?
Yes, please, Commissioner Rubio, sorry.
That's okay. So, um, I I agree, Dan, with what with what what you're saying about I I that if you have those three, they are um, livability. I just feel like it's worth stating too, that I think for a long time and for many communities, the word livability sometimes is a proxy for something else, uh, which means um, that that can feel very um, uh, ex- excluding excluding broad communities from the broader um like civic work that we're trying to do and that we're trying to accomplish. So I have some discomfort with um, with leading with that. Um, but if we are gonna lead, but I but I do at the same time agree with what Commissioner Hardisty about, if it's very important narrowly to the mayor, you know, I will support that, but I feel like, you know, if we do, it has to be very, very carefully, I um, uh, uh, explained or like the description of what we mean by that. So if we have to use it, I would, I would support it in that regard, if it's very narrowly explained. But if we can, I would love to see it uh embedded in these other goals that can result in that as well. That that would be my preference, but I will, but I will work with both, both avenues.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. And Mayor, you had your hand up.
Yeah, that's that's an important uh statement that Commissioner Rubio has just made. And uh, I gravitated towards the word livability, just because I wasn't smart enough to think of something else. Uh, it does not have to be the word livability, and and I think we can put our thinking caps on that and find a better way to express it uh, that that isn't loaded or uh have a negative historical connotation. I I'd I'd be happy to to consider that. I appreciate the comment.
Thank you.
Lovely. This is so good. Okay, so um, top three. We have houselessness. We're good with that. We're good with community safety. And then I want to make sure, was economic recovery prosperity number three? And are we saying both economic recovery prosperity or one? Like, how do we want to phrase that?
That's a really good question, because, I mean, uh, uh, right now, it's about um, uh sustaining people where they are, right? And then it's about creating economic opportunities when we come out of this pandemic. Uh, so I, you know, I'm not uh really sure um, uh, how we should actually uh uh articulate that. I, and maybe it's because I I do think your directions were immediate, short term, and then long term. And so I think if we're, if we're in the immediate uh frame, we would be talking about economic stability, right? Because we have a lot of uh economically unstable community members right now, right? And hopefully with new COVID dollars coming in, to address that, we could actually help stabilize people where they are. Uh, but uh, uh, the longer term plan uh would be all about economic, uh, I would call it economic prosperity um, uh, that uh centers BIPOC communities uh in uh in our recovery.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. Mayor, did you have your hand down? Baby?
No, I I took it down. Sorry, I left it up and and forgot to take it down. I apologize.
No worries. Commissioner Ryan, yes?
Oh, yeah, I I was just using the word survival, which I think was similar to what I was hearing from Commissioner Hardisty. But what one did you just use? Stability, right?
Yeah, she said stability.
I said stability, yes.
And so it's like, there's a lot of, a lot of survival's gonna need to take place, especially um, you know, when we, when you think about the moratorium being lifted. And so that gets me just thinking about, you know, food, people need food, people need shelter. And then there's um recovery, which then eventually, I guess I look at everything as a continuum, like it's your two prosperity. So I'm glad the economy's in the in the top three, and uh, I I'll I'll just end with that.
Okay, very good. Um, Commissioner Maps, and then, yes?
Um, I might point out that it seems like we're avoiding naming the elephant in the room, which is COVID. I I, you know, I think that we all have long-term goals in terms of economic prosperity and shrinking the uh uh the wealth gaps that are out there. Uh, but really, I think the theme that, or the thread that unites everyone who kind of mentioned uh economic, the economy and to survival is, um, you know, COVID relief and COVID recovery. Also point out that I think the our publics and our constituents are gonna understand that, and that's gonna kind of reg- they're gonna know exactly where we are. On the other hand, when we talk about uh economic recovery, that can mean, you know, one thing to the guy who wants to build an office tower in Portland, and a different thing to a a single mom east of eighty second, who uh, you know, hasn't been able to pay all of her rent for the last six months.
Thank you. So survival, economic survival.
I'd say COVID recovery and, or COVID relief and recovery, like, that's frankly how I talk about it when I'm out in the world. But I I I don't want to have a fight over this.
No.
If it's helpful, great. If it's not.
Commissioner Rubio, you want to have a a comment, and then we'll?
Um, I I just, I agree with Commissioner Maps about, I I think there's something important about naming it. So whether it's in the heading or it's somewhere else, but I think it's important to to state that 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 is top of our mind every day.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I I guess the question is, is it like COVID stabilization, right? And then afterwards, we're talking about economic recovery and um, and actually, uh, uh, you know, what what comes after that? Because I, I agree. I mean, what we know from Mike Myers and the um ECC is that we have a lot of uh families that are um food insecure. And that's not gonna change anytime soon, right? So I I, yeah, it does feel like we're kind of ignoring the crisis and actually talking about like what we're gonna do when we're crises free, which, you know, feels a little disingenuous, right, as we uh, as we bring this out into the community. And so I, you know, I I I would think that we would want to lead with uh doing all we can to keep people stable until we are through this COVID crisis. And then after that, have our list of top three that we as a council are actually focused on. I think if, because I think we could get too far in the weeds about, you know, what we can do and what we want to do coming out of COVID. But right now, I think all hands on deck around surviving COVID.
Okay, Commissioner Ryan, and then the mayor, and we're going to, so COVID stabilization, right, is kind of what I've written down as the the naming of of our goal three, but um, Commissioner Ryan, um, Mayor.
I would just say for the, like, everyone, it's been on my mind, and I've thought about it in my top three, but I I focus a lot on where there's control and influence for the, for the, for what the city does. And I just know with this one, the state and the county come before us and with so many of the operations. Um, but that but that's probably why it wasn't in my top three. But I have it as an overarching um goal, or just a a fact, it's a condition. It's a, it's a condition that affects all of these things. Um, but I I just hope that we're really cognizant of how we partner with the county and the state on this.
And that's certainly as we begin to articulate like goals, Commissioner Ryan, I think that I'll offer like that could be that space, right, as we sort of drill down into this.
Thanks. The role clarity is what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, Mayor, and then I'm gonna turn it back over to Jessica to to close us out.
Yeah, I've I've thought about what Commissioner Hardisty said, and um, in in all of my conversations, I always have to start off with, the COVID crisis is obviously the environment which we're currently operating. Uh, but given that that this will probably be covered, given that we will probably be leading to a document that will be publicly disclosed, I think we probably should make it crystal clear that we acknowledge the COVID crisis and the recovery efforts that that we're engaged in are uh, the immediate context in which we are operating. We will continue to all work very hard on that, along with each and every city bureau uh, as we have been doing. Uh, but I I think Commissioner Hardisty is right on this. I think we we do need to overtly and clearly acknowledge that.
Okay.
Oh, man, I'm gonna record that. I don't hear that often. I hear Commissioner Hardisty's right. I I gotta, I I'm too bad my recording wasn't on there. Sorry.
And and I said in this case, just to be clear.
I knew there was a a caveat.
Okay, everyone, we can take a breath. Um, thank you for indulging some time with me. Uh, I'm gonna turn it back over. Jessica, I don't remember if this is your slide or not, but I'm gonna take a break from talking and make it be your slide.
Fabulous, you are a fabulous facilitator. Thank you. It's, this is like herding five cats, right?
It was awesome. I I feel honored. I feel honored for.
I think we're all very sweeted up, so, yeah.
Darker than, thank, thank you so much for your facilitation today. This, this is the hardest group probably in the city to facilitate, and I think we all feel heard and respected. And we're coming out of this a much stronger and more unified council, so I want to thank you for your leadership on this.
You're absolutely welcome. It has been my my pleasure and joy today, so I was looking forward to it. All right, thank you, Jessica.
Sure. So in the couple of minutes that we have remaining.
Sure, so in the couple of minutes that we have remaining, I am just gonna talk a little bit about some of the next steps. So I did not put on the slide, and I should have a group communication. I think absolutely that that would be a fantastic and an essential next step. So I'll go back and I'll work with some communication folks and the folks on each of your team to try to refine maybe a joint press release that can go out, that can talk about the path forward. I do think that, and we expected that, you know, having this conversation at a high level, only having two hours to talk about all of these complex issues, that we weren't gonna have enough time to really get to the nitty-gritty details that are required when we're identifying goals. And I think identifying those goals will actually help refine what these priority areas really mean, and we'll see more commonality once we start getting to that level. So that will be the work that is to be done in some follow-up sessions. We have most closely to us right now, the February 2nd work session has already been scheduled on community safety. That's going to be led by Chief Administrative Officer Tom Reinhardt. We have some work sessions that are in the works, there are various bureau leaders and program leaders that are talking about bringing information to you all specifically on some critical issues related to central city recovery and our central city revitalization and economic recovery that I think will dovetail well with some of the goals and the issues that you care about. We have, of course, several hours of budget work sessions in March, and I will be looking for ways for us to tailor those work sessions and the budget decisions that we will see at the end of this month coming, coming our way, and tailor those sessions to connect to this conversation and make sure that we're tying in your budget decisions with some of these priority areas. And then, and then I want to keep an open conversation around other requested information and sessions. It sounds like we definitely need to follow up on, on really trying to drill in and define what we need and what our goals are around houselessness, and particularly the current crisis that we're dealing with right now and anticipating the crisis that is going to come and hit us hard in, in, in March and when, when the, the freeze of paying for rent is over. So other, other items and requests for sessions, please reach out to my office, and I will, I will convene and work with other bureau directors to make sure we get you the information we need. It is now four o'clock, so unless there are other questions or items that anybody has for me or for anyone else, I think we can, we can close. And Mayor, I'll turn it back to you to close the session.
I have one quick question, Jessica, before you turn it back over to the mayor. I see there's a work session on central city revitalization, but not on businesses all over the city. Is there a reason why we're only focused on downtown and not all business recovery?
So what I am aware of is that there has been a collaborative working group across bureaus that has been actively talking about a crisis that is happening downtown. And they have been talking about different strategies that they are working on together downtown. There may also be other conversations that are happening around neighborhoods outside of the downtown core, and I will look into that and find that out. But what I'm hearing implied is that you would also like a conversation around neighborhood vitality and issues that are happening outside of the central city.
I would be very concerned if the only conversation we had about revitalization was about downtown, because a lot of areas, businesses are hurting, so, yeah.
Yeah, there are other conversations going on about the business districts in the neighborhoods, as well as the industrial districts. So I agree with that, that point is well taken.
I don't, I have a point, could we look at the data to see? Because some of the data I've seen does show disproportionality of blight and challenge downtown compared to neighborhoods. So I just want to see the data, that's all.
And to be clear, we're talking central city, which is more expansive than downtown. Crystal clear on that point, good, excellent, thank you, we'll make sure we clarify that. So I'll just say, thanks, everybody, again, Dr. Smith, thank you, colleagues, great discussion. This is what work sessions are all about. I'm really honored to work with all of you, I think this is, this bodes well for the year ahead. Thank you all for your time.
Jacques says, thank you all, bye-bye.